All right then, we need to call the special meeting of Town Council to a close. I have moved that we do so, Mr. Mayor, seconded by Councillor Simonno. Are those in favour then? Kerry, thank you. Confirmatory bylaw, Councillor Zant. I'm still trying to make ends meet here. Be it resolved that the city of Clarence and Rockland adopt a bylaw 2016-70, being confirmatory bylaw for the regular meeting of Town Council held on the 19th of December 2016. Seconded by Councillor Simonno. Are those in favour? Thank you then. So, special meeting is called to a close at 8:25pm. Let's call the next meeting open. Open at 8:25 or 8:10, should I say. Are we ready, man? Let's go on to the agenda. I move that the agenda be adopted as presented, seconded by Councillor Zant. Yes, any additions or changes? I'd like to propose a change. I'd like to remove the CID-related resolution. Which number is that in our agenda? That's item 9.4, Mr. Mayor. I see. Municipal affairs and housing. I have issues with the wording there. So, we're going to push it back to the next meeting. All right, well, thank you very much. Anything else? Any other changes? Councillor Lalland?
I'd like to present a notice of motion that I'd like to distribute to members of council. That could be formally presented under petitions and correspondence, I believe. Yes? That deals with the Corner Store in Clarence Creek. Yes, fine. All right then. Any other additions or changes, modifications? That's it? All right, all those in favour then? Yes, Kerry? Delegations of conflicts, interest? None? Fine. No delegations? Petitions and correspondence? Letter received from the Clarence Creek Lions Club? Oh, that was removed, Mr. Mayor. All right. Letter received from the Paroix Saint Trinité requesting to grant a building permit free of charge. I had occasion to read the letter. Of course, we're dealing here with a heritage building that's located within the city of Clarence and Rockland because there's not all that much we can do in this regard. I believe we can do, at least, we can play a certain role in helping them with their building permit, still preserving the heritage aspect of things. Well, you're talking about the heritage angle of things, yes. Otherwise, I was going to recommend my employer to start up a religion of myself because I have about $280,000 some thousand pending building permits on Connel Street. We could have started up a religion. This being said, well, no further comments on this. Any other comments, reasonable comments to be made at this table? Very good then. Are you in agreement to go ahead and honour the request stemming from this letter? Do we need a letter? Well, yes, we can come up with a resolution at the next or regular meeting of Town Council. That's right. Well, fine then. Fine. We wanted also to pinpoint a date for a meeting with Mrs. Collier. We need to come up with a date that would allow us to draw up a roadmap for next year with Town Council. Either the second week in January? Well, maybe during the course of the first meeting of February? Well, I'm meeting with different directors on the 19th to do the work plan. So, on the first meeting of February, you'll have the roadmap. That's what you're talking about? Well, maybe establish a meeting after the director's meeting, Mrs. Collier? So, if there are extra things that the council wants added to the agenda, it can be discussed then. I think we're discussing two different things here, Mr. Mayor. Well, that's right. I'm dealing with the roadmap concerning the revitalisation of Lordy Street? No, Mrs. Collier. No, what we're looking at, Mr. Zant and the rest of council are looking at, well, we've come to an agreement where we would like to set up a roadmap for next year, Mrs. Collier, between yourself and Town Council. Let's say we set goals and objectives, whatever, you see? That's why we would like to meet with you at one point in time. It's not to discuss, of course, the work plan. I appreciate, you know, this is completely different. You know, we don't have a meeting until the 23rd of January. So, we might, you know, do this during the first part of January, maybe the second week of January. When we're back there, we have a date we can set for that purpose. Yeah, I don't have a calendar with me, but we can pinpoint a date. We're not meeting on the 9th of January? No, the 23rd. That was the old one. Well, why don't we meet on the 9th? No, no, I'll be in Florida then. Could be in February. No, I'm just alluding to the January 23rd meeting. Well, Councillor Simonno shall not be in attendance. We have established this ourselves. Well, you're able to do things without my being here. Well, that's why I stated, Mr. Mayor, during the course of the first quarter of next year, we could set up a meeting then. Oh, I'm free on the 9th? Yes. The second week might be feasible. The second, let's say, the second Monday of January might be feasible for everyone. But the first official meeting is to be held on the 23rd. The 9th is to be looked upon, let's say, as a special meeting. A meeting involving Town Council and Mrs. Collier. 7 o'clock, folks? 7pm? Yeah, 7pm is fine. All right, so 9th of January, 7pm. Would someone care to come up with a resolution to that effect? Are you on holidays, Mrs. Collier, on that particular date? No? Fine. But in any event, there's nothing set in stone, you know, as far as this goes. I was just going to say, how can we suggest a roadmap when we have it sit down to determine what the roadmap will be? Well, we're dealing with a list of goals that we'd like to achieve. Now, I see. Well, I think that we could enter into a discussion with our chief administrative officer, you know, involving Town Council and herself. Let's just come up with an idea of what we wish to be done and then we can enter into formal discussions. As to that, later. Let's go on now to the notice of motion. To the notice of motion. Go ahead, Mr. Lalland, with your notice of motion. Mr. Mayor, the Corner Store located at the corner of Clarence Creek has made a request to the province of Ontario to obtain a liquor permit to allow it to sell beer and wine. Now, you and I had sent a letter in support of this request and what I'm seeking from Town Council is a motion to support this request, to support Mr. Marsil in his endeavours to obtain an alcohol permit. Well, I consulted with Mr. Marsil two weeks ago and made him aware that there is some paperwork that he has not yet completed. I spoke about this with Mr. Grant Crack and I told Mr. Marsil to hurry things up. Mr. Grant, Mr. Crack told me to make him aware when all the paperwork will be prepared and I was told that the approval process might take a while. If you'll allow this comment on my behalf, Mr. Mayor, every town has an LCBO permit issue, so there should be no problem. Well, I know, I know. But of course, you know, the Clarence Creek residents go to Rockland, but the LCBO in Bougette is located under a Corner Store. We're not going to offer a great variety of spirits and wine. It's a small variety and it's going to improve his chances, this gentleman's chances of remaining open. Really, that's the only business, that's the only Corner Store we have in this village that's still operational. Mr. Marsil has invested a lot of money, a great deal of money, in this particular business. As a member of Town Council, that's the least we can do to help him out. Councillor Zant? Yes? I'd like to say that we have to differentiate Corner Store's needs, you know, and the LCBO, an LCBO-run establishment, an LCBO-run establishment is government-run, of course, but still, I support with Mr. this resolution. So, we'll draft a resolution and we'll discuss it officially at the next meeting. Fine, let's go on now to the question period. Does anyone in attendance have any questions? Of Town Council? Your name and your address, please. Yes, my name is Mr. Novak. 170 Le Micartier, Ward 1. My question's in three parts, but I know the time constraints, so I might send the rest of my questions by way of email. Now firstly, can you please justify the increase of fees of toddlers in between 21% and 107%? That increase? What, knowing that in the August meeting, we confirmed that the toddler services is the service that's most expensive? Part 2, why during the course of presentation to Town Council during the meeting of 8th of August? Are you talking about increases in percentages? 2% to 4%, but for extracurricular activities in AM and PM? Option 2, we only indicate new fees. Is it that you wish was not to reveal that those new fees contained increases in between 21% and 107%? And what mechanisms did you implement to reduce operational costs or operating costs to ask parents that would alleviate parents' burden to pay for additional costs? Knowing that in August, Mr. Keogh had indicated that the invoicing service was not all that efficient? How did you address this worrisome situation? And how was that reflected in the new 2017 budget? Sir, do you have any answers as to this? Well, I believe that I addressed all of those points beforehand, but I did not address those points directly with the gentlemen here tonight. Now, we've opted for option 2. I made you aware of all of the rates involved and the budget that was adopted was the view of making things financially feasible for everyone. And Town Council opted for the approval of option 2 at the time in which we entered into budgetary talks. Councillor Zant? Well firstly, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank Mr. Novak? Novak? Yes, Mr. Novak? For his question. Town Council members are cognizant of my position with regard to this. Of course, it stands to reason that our town representative is in a very difficult position because he has to maintain balance between the needs and the costs. If we are to increase, however, rates, they should be raised uniformly throughout all services, but not just for one section of services offered. We should not penalise those making use of toddler-related services in the AM or the PM as opposed to others. The increase should be feasible and fairly applied uniformly throughout all services. Well, I believe that we've received grants from the United Counties of Prescott Russell to alleviate the daycare centres' financial burdens. There's a lot of money that we've received grant-wise to keep these programmes operational. It would cost us much more if we hadn't received grants from the United Counties of Prescott and Russell. Councillor Lalland? I believe, Mr. Mayor, that we'd compared our figures with those of other daycare centres along with services that we were offering, given all age groups involved. And I still believe that we are under the asking prices of other daycare centres. Councillor Lalland? Well, a part of the, I'd like to answer part of the questions raised by Mr. Novak. We might try to look within services offered to try to reap savings. Now, during the course of discussions we had with Mr. Boucher, if you'll recall, there were over and above 88% of expenditures that were related solely to salaries for daycare employees. So, it's very, we're very restricted with regards to other expenditures that could be called upon to be cut by us. Now, that's in answer to a part of your question. Although you'd raised another, also, you'd raised another issue whereby we hadn't pegged any percentages for other categories. Now, when we performed the most recent budgetary revision, we pinpointed percentages. Because, of course, we were tackling a new category, it was hard to make a comparison as to what was pre-existing because we were not comparing equal numbers. Now, Mr. Boucher has stated though that the service that is offered by the city of Clarence and Rockland is semi-comparable to all those other services offered elsewhere. We're not working on the same conditions imposed in other municipalities as those imposed in the municipality of Clarence and Rockland. Of course, we, those that we hire are certified individuals, working certified individuals. Now, we're talking about 48 employees. We're not only talking about part-time employees. And those particular employees, well, the majority of those employees that work in daycare services are unionised also. Let's not forget this also, that some daycare centres would have closed if the city of Clarence and Rockland would not have taken them under their wing. I believe that the school-related daycare centre would have closed its doors had it not fallen under the Town of Clarence and Rockland's tutelage, if you wish. Now, we had no choice. At the end of the year, we did incur a deficit and we have to come up with means to at least not reap any benefits from our operations, but at least not reap any losses either. Now, and further to Mr. Lalland's comments, let's not forget that 88% of all of our expenditures are salary-related. Is it really the responsibility of the AMPM group, of the group that pays more for services, to pay for all of the incumbents brought about by salaries? What I'm saying is that the costs imposed be transferred equally at all levels to make sure that not one specific level is subject to a 100% increase. Of course, if we take a look at services offered or, you know, garbage pick-up, you know, for example, garbage pick-up services that, you know, contemplate a 50% increase. Well, you see, the problem is that the ratio of children changes along with different categories. Well, we can't say that the AM and PM categories cost more than the toddler category costs. That's, therein lies the increase. But the toddler cost is not as high as the Ottawa toddler-based costs. That's the only thing that this gentleman wants and the other citizens want is to have a fair and balanced increase. I stated that I was going to bring a report to Town Council during the course of the next budgetary costs that deal with toddlers and extracurricular events or activities. Now, there are only 140 children that receive regular services. The others are toddlers or those that receive AM or PM services. Now, if we obtain, try to obtain more money to cater to the needs of toddlers, then we need to resort to sizable increases. Again, I'd just like that all increases be spread out equally. But you see, you don't have the same amount of youngsters in individual categories. Mr. Lalland? Mr. Boucher, the administrative cost for this particular group is higher than other groups, is it? No, it's not. Well, I believe that what's happening is this, is that those rates that he's alluded to have increased by 102, 69 and 45%. And these rates are applicable to 31 out of 800 clients that we cater to. Now, the other rate that increases from $12.40 to $15, that represents 21% worth of increase. That applies to 154 clients that we deal with. Well, those, for those 31 clients, that's quite a difference, isn't it? How much money, what are we talking about, Mr. Boucher? It, well, it's a sizable difference. However, when we took over the daycare that was run by this school three years ago, you know, we were contending with two rates. A rate in the morning and a rate for afternoon services now. When we took over the daycare about three years ago, the day-to-day operations, we had three options to offer. Those who brought their toddlers in the morning, those who brought their toddlers in the afternoon. Now, the county-based services offer five options or did offer five options. What, eight, actually, eight invoicing options. Now, if we take a look at what we did three years ago, we only had five invoicing options with the same rates prevalent with regards to morning and afternoon services. I'm not reinventing the wheel here. Yes, but the rates did increase and the amount of employees has also increased. Now, you can't compare what was done beforehand. Of course, we're contending with the same system, but the costs are not the same anymore. I understand. But you see, the fact remains, sir, that for 31 clients or 31 individuals, they're facing a doubling of their daycare costs. But I can tell you that we should not be held hostage. This information was disseminated to those people in the month of October. We gave them months to come up with an alternative. So, if the parents were not in agreement with what Town Council decided upon, they could have appealed, but we gave them the option. We didn't tell them, this is what it's going to be. We gave them the option, they didn't come up with any alternatives. But you see, services offered by this daycare would have ended if we would not have taken this particular daycare under our wing. But Mr. Novak did not, does not address his comments to this particular daycare. But Mr. Zant? We received grants from the United Counties of Prescott Russell to have all of those daycares run smoothly and things would go, run along much, would be rougher if we did not receive any grants. And even then, compared to other services offered through daycare services, well, comparables were not applicable to AM and PM services, only for day-long services. On the document we were handed on the 17th of October, other daycare services were looked into. Well, but the toddler costs are higher. Well, the toddler costs are higher, but the number of hours is not the same. But the number of hours or the programming is not the same. The programming offered to toddlers is not offered at the same rate. You're saying that in the morning, there are only 2.3 hours offered? Well, if, at Saint Trinité, it's 2 o'clock? It's up to 2 o'clock. Well, if you, if you hire a babysitter, it's going to cost you $10 or something, $20 at least. Well, a three-child family is not going to cost us the same. And you're in the process now of oppressing Francophone minority here in Ontario? Sir, let's just stop this right here. We're not going to get into linguistic battles here. That has no bearing in what we're talking here tonight. Don't please change the subject here tonight. You stated that 31 citizens, we're talking about a minority. It doesn't impact things all that much. The only option is to pay the increase or just go out the door. That's the only option you offered, citizens. And that's a city offered services. Well, this is your choice, sir. If you don't like the price of a car, then your choice is to purchase another car elsewhere. The thing is that we offer a service, sir. And we have to offer services at a price that is equal to those prices offered. And we're not talking about $15 for 2.5 hours. It's for prior and after. Now, we're talking about $15 before and after. In any event, at this point in time, if you take both options, it's $20. If you only take one option, it's $15, either AM or PM. Well, the parents' share for extracurricular supervision is quite high. But it's just fine though to increase all others. If we compare this by some $15 or $20. Well, I'm not in agreement because only 154 children make use of these particular services you're alluding to. The rest, 376 children, make use of all of the other services offered at a reduced rate. Have any other individuals complained? You issued a notice in October? Well, Mr. Mayor, I believe that the matter that has been raised is appropriate. I've received four or five complaints and I believe four or five clients have taken up services in January. Well, I thank you for having broached this situation. And instead of taking logical decisions, you're waiting that citizens complain vehemently about the situation. Well, sir, we have to take into account that if no other individuals come up to Town Council to tell us that they're not content with what we've decided, then we have to rely on what our director has stated to us. So, you believe that this increase is justified? Sir, it has been adopted at the very latest round of budgetary talks. It has been approved. That's all I can tell you. Fine, we'll follow up on that, that's for sure, Mr. Mayor. Well, thank you then. Any other individuals that wish to address Town Council? That's it then? Fine. United Counties of Prescott Russell report, as you're all aware, Mr. Gary Barton, who is mayor of the Champlain Township, has been named as the new warden, has been appointed as a new warden in the United Counties of Prescott Russell. Let's go on now to committee reports. Item 9.5, 9.1, modification to zoning bylaw for the 2203 Le Vibe Street property. The Committee of the Hall recommend to Town Council that it approves the zoning bylaw amendment 2016-10 to change the zoning category for both properties described as being 2203 Le Vibe Street and Lot 19, concession 5, part 3, Plan 50R, 5251, from density RV1 to village density RV1, exception 24, as recommended by the Infrastructure and Land Planning Committee. Seconded by Councillor Gilmour. Any questions? All those in favour then? Kerry, thank you. Let's go on to the next item, the zoning bylaw amendment for 282 Maison Neve Road. I believe that's been rejected, has it not? Well, that the Committee of the Hall recommend that Council approve the application to amend zoning bylaw 2016-10 in order to change the zoning category to the property located at 2822 Maison Neve Road from general agriculture AG zone to general agriculture, exception 20, AG 20, as recommended by the planning committee. Seconded by Councillor Lalland. All those in favour? Kerry then, thank you. Request for a free rental at the Jean-Marc Lalland Arena, whereas the municipality received a request from the Mental Health Canadian Association for free rental of the Jean-Marc Lalland Arena for an activity to be held on the 20th of January 2017. Be it resolved that the Committee of the Hall recommend to Town Council that it recommend the use of Jean-Marc Lalland Arena free of charge, as recommended, for that particular date and for that particular event. Seconded by Councillor Lalland. All those in favour? Questions? Seconded by Councillor Lalland. Fine, thank you. Item 9.5, hiring strategy. Oh, no, we're still, yes, we. Hiring strategy for a director of infrastructure and planning. Committee of the Hall recommend that, recommends that Town Council proceed in the following fashion to hire a strategy for director, infrastructure and planning to complete a revision salary, to post the available... a revision salary, to post the available, post, and recruit and recommend candidates for the position of director of infrastructure and planning, and for to proceed to interviews to hire a competent individual. Councillor LaLonde, Mr. Mayor, if we are to publish this post, it should be published in the Municipal Works publication, Municipal World, I'm sorry, magazine or publication. Similar requests for positions to be filled are published. I thought you dealt with publicizing the position. Yes. You're not running publicity to recruit, a recruiter for that position, but to recruit potential candidates? That's right. If it is to be published in the Municipal World, a magazine or publication, that's, well, I believe that, that would reap dividends. To obtain an individual that is able to perform necessary research in some of those files that the City of Clarence and Rockland is called upon to contend with is not an easy task. Mrs. Madeleine Chalabois had been one of those. Now, the Municipal World publication is that publication that is received by all town councillors throughout Ontario, and those people working at me in Public Works also receives this publication. Councillor LaLonde, I believe that, you know, we need a headhunter, a recruiter at this point in time. Mr. Mayor, we tried on two occasions in the past to do so and didn't, didn't yield any tangible results. I believe that we should start up with this process as quickly as possible and to ensure a feasible transition, to make sure that Mr., when Mr. Darich relieves, that this be a smooth process. We're looking for someone that's bilingual, of course, someone that's, that fits with the municipality's needs, even though this individual is Anglophone more than Francophone, but is willing to learn the French language. We need to consider the best interests of the City of Clarence and Rockland, and we need someone who's able to motivate his or her team, someone who's innovative, that's not marred in the old way of thinking, old ways of thinking, someone who's able to properly manage, a true manager, a true project manager. That's what we need. Councillor Simonon, well, I'd like to bring a, clarify something with regards to what you said previously. I believe that we headhunted for a director once in the past. Well, councillor Simonon, I was not dealing with our town council, of course. Look, I just live with consequences. Well, could a headhunter be considered a contact person here in Rockland? Could we not make use of a contact person here in Rockland as a headhunter? Is that not the same thing? Well, it's similar to that, but this individual has specialized knowledge. Yeah, to come up with a, we need to come up with a proper engineer. Headhunters specialize in municipal senior employees. There's something we might look at, but we'll bring back a recommendation to this effect, in any event. Councillor Guirma?
Could be one last comment on my part. It will behoove us and Mrs. Chalabois. We need a diploma, we need to look at the individual's character. We dealt with the leadership and influence, we know what we wish, and we have to be competitive with other municipalities that offer a certain type of salary. Otherwise, the equation is quite simple. We won't necessarily come up with the best candidate. I agree that it's quite nice to concentrate on someone who is a diploma, the holder of a diploma, but we need someone also who's a proper fit for our needs.
Shall we determine at what level and what class this position is to be pegged at? I believe we're dealing with a level-eight position here. Level-eight, I see. Level-eight. Well, I believe that, you see, that's, well, do you want us to remove the following provision, to post the position locally and to hire a headhunter or a recruiter? Yes. We also can rely on our website to do so. Well, you know, we can work in parallel with other recruiting methods that are at our disposal. We can easily post this on our website without this costing us all that much. And if we receive the information, we relay it to the headhunter that we'll hire to allow these, this headhunter to perform what needs to be, to do what needs to be done. Well, we can obtain a candidate for Moose Jaw. Well, that's quite a ways from here. Mrs. Collier, you'd mentioned level-eight, a level-eight position? Are you, you're alluding mostly to a class-eight position, right? There, there, there is not a level-eight position within our hierarchy. We're, we're dealing here with a class-eight and not a level-eight position. That's right, that's right. Do you know where we're, what our wish is then, ma'am? You're quite aware of what our wishes are? Yes. Fine. All right then. Do you want me to read the resolution anew? No? All we need to do is to take a vote on this. So we're not going to post this locally. So the directive is this, to go ahead and recruit a headhunter that will in turn recruit a feasible candidate. So, and also to enter into a detailed revision of the salary that is to be paid out and to remove condition number two to it, that it be posted locally. This is not a need. Two thousand eighteen election changes to the municipal act that the Committee of the Hall recommends that the municipal council confirms that electronic ballots will not be used in the two thousand eighteen municipal elections, and that the Committee of the Hall authorizes clerk to prepare a bylaw to authorize an alternative method of voting, being by telephone or internet voting for the two thousand eighteen municipal elections for councils' consideration, and that council directs the clerk to initiate a proposal for the implementation of internet and telephone voting for the two thousand and eighteen election, and that the Committee of the Hall recommends that municipal council that ranked ballots not be used. Oh, we're repeating ourselves here. So that right or written ballots not be used. I'm sorry. Seconded by councillor Guirma? Let's find any questions? Mr. Mayor? Readily noticed that when people are called upon to phone in or to make use of internet facilities, that the elderly have a hard time contending with this. Could we not set up polling stations? Yes, of course, at the, at retirement homes? You know, where people, you know, that people can go up to, you know, floating polling stations. Look, we do have venues already set up that allow people to go and vote there. You know, ranked ballots are those ballots that are removed. You know, those ranked ballots are those that refer to candidate one, two, or three. But we're mentioning here either by telephone or internet facilities. What Mr. LaLonde states is that he wants paper. He wants the option that paper be used also. You'll be able to attend a voting station that will help these people out vote through the internet. So there will be stations set up for that purpose? Yes, there were some even set up at the last, for that purpose, at the last municipal election. We're not just talking about voting by phone or through internet from your home. I see. Mr. Mayor, if I might be allowed to add this here, you must vote or implement a method, and then I'll come back with the relevant procedures and details concerning that procedure that you shall have voted on and implemented. Isn't that no, no one else has made use of this method and we're kind of nervous in implementing it right now? No, no, not at all. Because the City of Ottawa has also refused, refused. I know that the Township of Russell has voted against this measure, because this requires more intensive follow-up. This method, if it's implemented, requires more intensive follow-up. We need a fair method. Well, we don't have any electoral college here. That's too bad. Well, let's revisit that issue. Mrs. Collier?
Well, Mr. Mayor, we understand that there could be a lot of debate on this report. I know this. We wanted to get it to you before the new year, because our next meeting is not until the January the twenty-third meeting. We can table it tonight. If you want more research to be performed on it, that's fine, and we can vote on it on the twenty-third.
Well, I'm fine on the principle, and I applaud the initiative of doing some work on this a long time before it is implemented, because there's going to be some debate on this. Will we do, doing away with ranked ballots then? And Mrs. Wiment will come up with an alternative means of tackling this issue. I believe that Mr. LaLonde wants to ensure that we include polling stations. This is contingency that's included in paragraph number two to be a bit more transparent. So you'll come back to us with a report dealing with internet, phone, and polling station voting measures to be implemented? Yes? We've always taken means to facilitate people voting through internet means or through the use of the phone. It won't be as intense as the last time around where everyone had to show up at polling stations. I am seeking a directive from town council as to what town council wishes in this regard. And from that point on, I'll implement necessary procedures to put this into action. Well, given your comments, I'd like town council members to think that the voting by way of telephone is not a very good method, because there are some individuals that have a hard time hearing and voting, telephone voting is not the best for those hearing-impaired individuals that wish to cast their votes, for example. Well, I thought that, you know, it's, it's confusing, Mr. Mayor. I told you, I raised that issue a long time ago and I, in any event, look, you know, it gives us a different option. All we're doing right now is that we're doing away with ranked ballots, and we just want to come up with other possibilities to be considered in the future. In any event, we'll revisit this in January. I know, I know. But I don't want our town clerk's time wasted in looking at measures that we're not interested. If the majority states that we might implement the phone method, that's fine, you know. Well, it's very easy to phone, phone in your vote, in any event, in any event. We received a lot of details as to how the next elections are to be conducted. Okay then. The registration period has not been shortened by some fifteen days? Fifteenth of November? No, it's the fifteenth of May instead of the fifteenth, the first of January. I believe that the intent to put forward one's candidacy remains the same date-wise. All they have to do is to decide to run for office at the time in which it's propitious for one, decide to run for office, that's all. All right. Let's go on, budget here to the next item. The Budget Status Report as of November thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. Councillor Keogh, the town council, received the report of the Budget Status Report as of November thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, seconded by councillor LaLonde. Yes, councillor Simonon, Mr. Mayor, it's unfortunate that the citizen that asked us some questions earlier on left the room and half and a buck, but if I take a look at item five, all expenditures, NCR transit one-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand, to reduce ridership, a hundred thousand dollars for salaries, you know, look, I appreciate Mr. Keogh, your report, I do appreciate it. And you know, when I say something nice, there's always something behind it, but, but, let's not rejoice, because we have many, many projects at present that are over budget, that probably have not been accounted for at this point in time. So, you know, let's not just go and spend that money, and I know you're not going to do it, because it's Christmas, but, you know, I just wanted the other members of council to realize that the three-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand dollars may be whittled down to thirty-thousand dollars or so, because we're looking at the extras on Laurier Streets and the extras everywhere. Major expenditures involved here. Mr. Keogh?
Mr. Mayor, well, I received subsequent information on Friday that the UCPR, well, you see, we always wait in the final quarter in December to get the final grant for daycare from the UCPR, and they've confirmed the amount to us, Mr. Mayor, and it happens to be a hundred thousand greater than what I'd anticipated here. So the good news is, the hundred-thousand-dollar deficit for daycare looks like it's going to be coming in around and help us in the balanced budget. It's going to add a hun, further a hundred thousand dollars to it, as council has mentioned. The big reason why we have this surplus at this stage, as you know and I've mentioned during the budget, is that we didn't issue debt this year, and it's largely the debt of budget that's providing the surplus. As I asked from council in the budget report, any surplus available here is going to be used to pay down capital projects, so that we won't have to borrow for those capital projects. So we won't be setting any surpluses to reserves. We'll be paying down capital projects, but we'll be coming back to council in the new year to advise as to how much we'll be doing when we have a confirmed amount. Hopefully, the amount of surplus. No, just more of a technical question. When I read your graphic on Schedule A, it states surplus deficit, surplus should be in bracket, brackets. All we have are minuses and plus numbers. I don't know if everybody sees that. So, you see, there are minuses and no pluses. So it took me a long time to understand this set of figures. So if it's surplus in brackets, please put it in brackets. I'm very simple with numbers, you know, yes, but it's not in brackets, you see? Well, there's a little minus sign. Well, for me, minus is minus, you see? Well, you see, this might mean two different things. Maybe I'm the only one that had trouble deciphering this? I always have trouble dealing with county documents. When I see surplus in brackets, I'll, I can pinpoint those easily. Fine. Minus, let's, let's not get into a debate here concerning, concerning negatives, surpluses in brackets, shall we? Please. Yes means no and no means yes? Come on now, folks. Let's go back now. To the meeting, any other questions? Fine. Thank you. Monthly reports. Let's go on to monthly reports, yes? Any questions concerning monthly reports?
Well, I don't have any questions that apply directly to the monthly reports. I do have one. Go ahead, councillor Guirma. Let's revisit the taxes that have yet to be collected, perceived. I don't want to harp on this again, but I believe that we've hired someone who has recently been trained in collecting uncollected taxes up to now. Now, for the past nine, eight or nine months that he's been working for us, in the past three years, we've had an increase, of course, of unpaid taxes again in one, during the past one, two, or three-year time period or period. We're talking about two-point-six-million dollars worth of unpaid taxes yet. Now, can we have an idea, Mr. Keogh, as to when a concrete plan will be implemented to lower those amounts as much as possible? lower those amounts as much as possible? And can you come back to us with an action plan to implement for those who are in arrears in their taxes for three years and over? Mr. Mayor will come up with a report addressing that question on, as of the 23rd of January. We'll come up with a report with regards to all tax accounts and how we can go about properly managing those accounts. Yes, councillor La Lande? Those amounts appearing on page 138 exclude interest costs, do they not? Or interest-related amendments that are alluded to? The R three chart. Well, that chart is not numbered, I believe. That excludes interest. That's chart number three. Does not include interest. That's the, that only relates to that amount of interest. Well, the other interests are pegged at 15%, I believe. Yes. Well, after three years, they're pegged at 45%. Helen, I'll speak in English because I'm going to direct a question to you, but I don't know if it should go to Mr. Darje or Mr. Boucher. But last week, I was touring in Mr. Grimah's ward, and then I came along to that point where the ward splits on this side where it's Mr. Grimah's and on that side it's mine. But, you know, they're repairing water service leading to the park right now, and it reminded me a lot, this being said, of Bouvier Road and what happened there. Because when I looked down the hole, there, there was this big water main smack dab in the middle of the street, and it had a main stop, which was supposed to have when you have a service, a water service, and it had about a meter's worth of pipe attached to it, and then a curb stop with no stem. And then no pipe for three feet distance further to that, and then the pipe started up again and ran right up to the stand post. Now, the stand post, when you open it, had no water coming out of it. So, you know, we had to, well, the city paid for the repairs. Now, I want to know at the next meet, the council meeting, the following. I want to know who did that? Was it the City of Clarence and Rockland? Did we hire a contractor? But we need a reply as to that. We're not a laughing stock here. No contractor should ever do that, or no city employee should ever be called upon to do that. Please tell me who's responsible for this. If it's a contractor, we'll sue him in court to pay for the repairs. If it's a city employee, we'll discipline him or her. But definitely, this cannot be approved. That's all I have to say. I just to, I'd just like to applaud his comments. Oh, well, thank you. Any other questions then?
With regards to tax arrears, one question, Mr. Keogh. Those four graphs that appear on paper that are before us, three years and more, you're talking about $678,000 worth of unpaid taxes? If I add all of those amounts, we're, I've come up with a 4.5 million total amount of taxes in arrears, 4.5 million dollars. If I add all of the back taxes owed, three years and on. Mr. Levaire? Did we hire a company, Pierre, to determine what was going on with the Jean-Marc La Lande Arena? And was the report, I know that we were told that the report was going to be issued in January as to what was going to be done with the arena? Is it on track?
Yes, the report will be forwarded to council to give you proper guidance as to what is done concerning this issue. We're not just dealing with a couple of buildings here, but with the complex as a whole, and this report should be forwarded to you during the course of the first quarter of next year or 2017. Other question? Before calling an adjournment, I'd like to wish all residents of Clarence and Rockland. Mr. Mayor? I'd like to mention something. I believe that Mrs. Wiment handed us information as to summer employment opportunities, and I would like that this summer employment opportunities, these opportunities be posted on the City of Clarence and Rockland's internet site. Do we need to vote on this? No, it's just a matter of adding a link onto our website, leading on to potential summer job opportunities. I would like to wish a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to all residents. Wish Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to all those tuning in, and all the best in the coming new year from all members of town council here at Clarence and Rockland. Thank you then. Adjournment called at 9:20 PM. Thank you.